If we could reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a contractual matter and two personnel matters. If we could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Robert Teigen.
Lauren Grasso.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaum.
Meredith Myers.
John Walton.
Catherine Natto.
John McPhillips.
And Ewan McNay is unable to be here this evening. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions that carries? Three, our meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. So, welcome back. Yesterday, we kicked off the new school year with all of our staff returning to prepare for the arrival of our students tomorrow. We are incredibly excited to begin the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Just a few items I want to highlight tonight, one being bus safety. Our buses will be back on the roads. Drivers are still familiarizing themselves with their routes. Some students also have new bus stops, so we kindly ask all drivers to exercise extra caution around our schools and buses. Last week, we did host a press conference emphasizing the importance of driver safety around school buses. And I am pleased to report that we've seen a decrease in the number of drivers passing school buses with the stop-arm cameras. Also, for tomorrow, the Bethlehem Police will be on-site at all of our schools to assist with arrival and dismissal to ensure a safe start to the first day of school. Also, a reminder to parents, I know they receive a lot of information at the start of the school year. If parents do have questions or concerns, we have updated our guide on our website for who to contact with specific concerns, so they don't get frustrated trying to figure out who to call or, you know, email a lot of different people. It is available on our website and is designed to help parents quickly find the right person. If they have any questions, they can certainly contact any of the buildings to also find that information out. I also want to clarify something regarding the new Link Connect system. As you know, this is a new system in place for our food service program as well as other areas that require secure payment for fees. We did learn that the system was charging family fees that in the past were covered by the districts such as AP exam fees. We've contacted Link and these fees will be reimbursed to families through their food service accounts, and we also will email directly parents who were impacted, I believe, correct? We're going to do that. So we'll notify all of them specifically that that, whatever they were charged, will be added to their child's meal accounts. And that is, oh, one other thing. We did have our administrative retreat two weeks ago. We reviewed our goals from last year and our metrics. We have drafted new action plans for the coming year, and I'll be sharing that out with the Board of Ed at our next meeting. And following that presentation, I'll then go to all the district buildings and share out those goals and action plans for the coming year. And that is my report.
Any questions for Jody?
Um, Jody, on the link, so is that corrected going forward? Folks will no longer be charged those fees?
Yes, it's corrected.
Perfect. And if anybody finds something in error, who's the best person for them to reach out to?
Who's the best person for them to reach out to?
Is there an email on this? Because its system is...
If it's a fee, I would say the person associated with the fee because they, like, so SAP doesn't have contact with the counseling office. Parking, I would contact the main office of high school. Food service, because the cafeteria, you haven't contacted them though.
So they can't contact Link direct, right? So you'd have to contact whatever, whoever was selling those.
Selling whatever you were purchasing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And there still is a fee for adding money to your lunch account.
Lunch account, correct. That was always the case.
Which is always the way it's been.
All the other things should not be charged, correct.
You can still avoid that fee by giving a check to, or cash, thank you, to the school.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, next is the, is the board report, and I don't have much other than to just say that I'm looking forward to the first day of school tomorrow. And enjoyed attending the opening day festivities with, with John. And I think if any of you guys want to make Jody happy, just tell her how much you like spending time in the wilderness.
Yes, please.
Um, and, uh, because unfortunately, as we know, she lost a debate with Bill Claremont of wilderness versus beach. So, um, might, might need a little extra support. Does anybody have anything else they want to share?
Catherine?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all the, the teachers and the staff who've been putting in all the time to get us ready for the first day of school and get us launched tomorrow. I had the, the absolute joy of being over at Elzmer today for school supply drop-off, and the excitement in the building was palpable. And everybody there was just, you know, teacher, staff, the, the whole team, just huge smiles, really welcoming. It was, it was really wonderful as always, and so I know how much work, well, I know I have, I know I don't know how much work goes into getting ready for this, but I'm very appreciative.
And if any of you haven't, I'm not sure if you guys, which entrance you come in, but if you haven't checked out next to the cafeteria. Um, in the, in the last week or so, they finished the, there's a new shaded area, I'm not sure what else you want to call it, with some new picnic tables, like, right outside the cafeteria doors to provide some new space for the high school.
Oh, yeah. I've heard people who are very excited about the parking lot at middle school, and, yeah, just looks great.
Anybody else? Moving on to our presentation this evening, and Dave Hurst is going to talk to us about the annual professional performance review.
Okay, thank you. So, as you know, every year, we spend a lot of time talking about teachers and administrators and their upper tenure. But we've never really sort of spent a detailed amount of time going over what the, the entire process looks like, so I thought it'd be good to share with you what the entire process looks like. So our plan, and this is a plan required by New York State Education, ours is approved, you know, probably five or six years ago now. But there's, there's multiple components to it, but really, the, the purpose of the plan is to support professional growth of educators, and there's a process which we'll go through. But this system is used for formally, for retention, tenure determination, termination, level of performance. But more importantly, it's really used as part of our sort of continuous improvement of our, our best practices for teachers to be able to provide the best environment for students to learn, right? So, the AP PR is broken up into two components. There's an observation component and a student performance component. The observation component, all of our teachers are observed by, at a minimum, two administrators, and all of our administrators are observed by both Jody and I. So, the way the observation rating works is ninety percent of a person's evaluation is determined by the lead evaluator. So for our elementary teachers, the lead evaluator would be the building principal, and then the independent evaluator, say, would be one of the subject area supervisors. At the secondary level, that kind of flips, so if you're an English teacher at the middle school, your primary evaluator or your lead evaluator is Dan Hash, ELA supervisor. And the independent evaluators are either the building principal or the assistant principals at the building. And then, so that's sort of how the process works. And then for principals, like, like I said, Jody's the lead evaluator and I am the independent evaluator, and for supervisors, it's flipped. I'm the lead evaluator and Jody's the independent evaluator. But that's the, the sort of the formal stuff, right? So even as we talk about this process, I think the, the more valuable piece for teachers is just the informal classroom drop-ins, right? So, even though you'll see that, like, for a non-tenured teacher, there are a requirement for these formal observations. Jody and I both form, both observe all probationary teachers at least four times before they receive tenure. That's not really part of this process. It's not uncommon to see supervisors in classrooms on a daily basis, just informally meeting with teachers, working with kids. So, you know, much more goes into evaluating teachers than what's sort of formally presented here. Because I think we have a very, very sort of active and collaborative district in terms of teachers and supervisors working in tandem, ensuring that students have the best experience possible. And then the state requires a student performance rating, and this is something that, if you recall, had a, a sort of a lot of controversy attached to it years ago. When, like, for the three through eight testing, teachers were getting these growth scores that were kind of determined by the state, and they backed off of that a few years ago. So now what districts are using, most districts are using just the five required Regents exams because at the end, all teachers have a role in a student's success on those exams. So this has sort of taken the pressure off of teachers kind of competing against each other, because in the past, like, if you were a second-grade teacher, you didn't get a score based from the state. It was just based on some local measures, but if you were a third-grade teacher, because your students took the ELA and math assessments, the state would just provide this, what they would call a growth score. And there was a lot of controversy behind that, when teachers would request sort of like, how exactly did you come up with the score? It wasn't really well-defined. That's what led to the, the opt-out movement, which has now subsided. So just to kind of give you some historical perspective on where that came from. So those two components are sort of taken a look at, and when there's a matrix that you basically line up where the teacher lands on the student performance category, where they land on the observation category, and then you're able to determine what their overall rating is. And because we're using the five required exams, our, since we've done that, our student performance rating has always been highly effective. So really, it's just this top row that teachers are falling on based on their observation rating. And I should say, and administrators, not just teachers. Um, so first, we'll talk a little bit about teachers, right? In order to make an observation process or an evaluation process or a performance process work, right, teachers or employees in general, they have to know what they're being rated on. It can't be something arbitrary, right? So the system that we use for teachers is called the Framework for Teaching. It was developed by Charlotte Danielson probably thirty years ago now, if not a little bit longer. But basically, it's a rubric-based system that provides a standard by which all teachers, and when I say teachers, I, I refer to anyone that works with kids as a teacher essentially. So this also applies to our counselors, our social workers, or psychologists. They have different rubrics, but they're all, they're all part of this framework for teaching on that Danielson created. But you need a fair and equitable system, and the only way to do that is with rubrics and sort of criteria that teachers know that they're being marked up against, right? So this is how we are able to ensure that we're evaluating people with integrity and fidelity. Every year, we do a training, so next Wednesday, actually, all of the administrators will go through a training, and we do a calibration where we watch videos. And the administrators basically pretend like that video is the classroom that they're in. They will sort of score it on the rubric, and then we'll work in groups to kind of compare how each other scores, and that's how we sort of calibrate to make sure that we're all evaluating the same way. So what does the framework look like? There are four domains within the framework. Each domain has either five or six sub-domains or components, right? And so those components, you can see there, range from anything from just knowing what it is you're supposed to teach up to, you know, communicating with students, engaging students, reflection. So those are the components that they're rated on. There are some common themes across all components, with equity sort of being at the center of that, so cultural competence. So this is sort of a term that's been recently sort of promoted, if you will. State Education Department came out with a whole guide on cultural competency standards, but this has been embedded in this rubric for over thirty years, so this is not new to us. High expectations, developmental appropriateness, student assumption of responsibility, and you'll see that's really a huge component as you move up in score in the rubric, and then attention to individual students. So this is just an example of one of the components, right? So if we were to look at domain two, component B, which is establishing a culture for learning, you can see that you have ineffective, developing, effective, and highly effective. And some of the key words as you change, as you move through the rubric, like, what moves you from sort of an ineffective or unsatisfactory rating to a basic, to a proficient, to a distinguished rating, right? So you can see that at the unsatisfactory or ineffective level, or some refer to this as the developing level, you're, right, a lot of like, lack, little or no, you're going to see those common words throughout, right? As you get to basic, you're getting a little better in these things. Proficient, this is actually, when the rubric was first developed, it wasn't done so with, with the intention of having a score attached to it. It was really meant for the teacher and an administrator to have just a conversation and to explore rooms for growth, right? So in theory, most teachers should pretty much always live in this proficient, effective range, right? That's really, if you're living there, then you're doing a great job. Once they started assigning scores to it, though, now it's like, well, everybody wants to be distinguished, even though that's, it's kind of more like an aspirational level. It was never intended for people to kind of live in that range. So the rubric itself has sort of lost some of its value because we've moved from, it was supposed to be used initially for conversation between supervisor and teacher. It was supposed to be used for, you know, defining areas of growth, and for the teacher to really self-reflect on how they can improve their practice, to now there's a score attached to it, a number. My employment's based on this. So it's really kind of, I don't know, it's, it's really taken away the power of the, of this system because it's become, it became punitive for some as opposed to what it was truly supposed to be, which was a way to collaboratively improve, right? So you can see, basically, these are some common words that are used across, right? So ineffective, none, developing some, effective most, highly effective always. But you can see highly effective, this is really, this, and this is why it's so difficult to achieve this, is students really take control of things. So if you read the rubric for, say, assessment, like, students take part in building the assessments, lesson planning, students take part in planning the lessons. So you can imagine to do that on a regular basis, especially if you have, like, you're teaching kindergarten, right? How are you supposed to have students help you design your lessons, or how, design assessments? Like, they're still learning to, like, just come to school and do school stuff, right? Cut with scissors. So that's why I say it's more like an aspirational end of things. But really, effective is where, you know, the success is really directed by the teacher, whereas when you get to highly effective, it's directed by students. So you'll see for, like, classroom management, highly effective, the students sort of take care of policing their own classroom, right? So when a student takes out of turn, the other students in the class sort of politely say, that's not how we respond when we want to speak. We raise our hand and wait for us, you know, to be called on, or when someone interrupts them, right? So, but it's the students doing all of the sort of self-policing, the, creating the lessons, creating the assessments. Which, yeah, you can see at, at a high school, upper-level courses, you know, that's a little bit more feasible, but to expect a K-two student to do those kind of things is, is a challenge, right? So, um, that's why, again, it's, it's really looked at as aspirational. These are things you should strive to do, but you're, you're not going to live in that land all of the time. So here, so within the rubric, we also have sort of critical attributes and examples, so this gives evaluators an idea of what exactly am I looking for, for a proficient rating within, say, domain too big, right? So you would see, okay, a teacher might say something like this is really important. You need to speak grammatical English when you apply for a job. Like, so those are, just to give evaluators sort of clues as to what signifies these attributes. So in terms of the formal process, probationary teachers in their first two years, they are observed formally four times, and what, what that means is they sit down with their evaluator for a pre-conference. They go over their lesson plan. They might ask the evaluator to look for, like, I've got two students with tricky behaviors. Can you just kind of keep it, keep an eye to make sure that I'm addressing those things appropriately? I've been struggling with my questioning techniques lately. Can you, at the end, make sure you provide feedback on how well I question students, those types of things? Then they perform the observation. After the observation, you meet again with the teacher and you go over the evidence you collected, how you scored it against a rubric, offer room for suggestions for growth. You, you know, also offer things that went well, so some praise, so that, that happens four times a year. You also meet mid-year, just to kind of more on a global level, review what you've seen throughout the year, and that's why I say it's important at, we're... And that's why I say it's important in classrooms more than just twice, right? It's hard to have a conversation mid-year and try to encapsulate everything that this teacher's done if you've only seen them two times, right? And then at the end of the year, the same thing happens. In Years Three and Four, they, there are two formal observations. So those are the ones still with the pre and the post-conference. And then what we refer to as two informal or walkthroughs. So these are still anywhere between twenty and forty minutes, but there's no pre-conference or post-conference. And then there's a mid-year conference and end-of-year conference. And then for tenured teachers, they have one formal observation and one walkthrough, along with mid-year and end-of-year. And again, as I said earlier, because of that ninety percent, ten percent rule, a minimum of two evaluators must perform the observations. One's considered a lead, and one is considered an independent. So that's kind of the formal nature. But again, I want to, again, emphasize that we do much more above the formal nature with, again, it's not uncommon to see supervisors or principals, or Jody and I popping into classrooms. So on the administrator side of things, very similar process. Different rubric, obviously. So the rubric that's used for principals is referred to as the APPR rubric. And again, it's, the idea is to promote continuous school improvement. The multi-dimensional principal rubric is based on the national standards. So there's about four or five different rubrics that took the national standards and kind of tweaked them to work within different states. So within a sort of theoretical underpinnings, there's kind of four areas that really encapsulate within a rubric. Alignment, representation, culture, and sustainability. And you'll see these when we actually look at the rubric itself. And within the rubric, the, one of the, so we saw with the Danielson rubric, there's a common themes, kind of with equity at the center. So some of the, I would say that the main theme within the principal rubric is the idea of relationships. And underneath that, you've got sort of accountability, leadership, school climate, collaborative leadership, family and community, and then goal-setting. So there are actually six domains for the principal rubric, as opposed to four for the teacher one. And when I say principal, it's called a principal rubric, but it's used for all administrators. So supervisors, directors, principals, assistant principals. So instead of calling them domains, they're kind of called dimensions, or instead of subcomponents, they're called dimensions. Some of these carry through all of them, some are only involved in some of them. But there's a very, very similar idea to the way the teacher rubric works. So there's the six domains that were just sort of summarized in that table. And this is what the rubric looks like. It's actually kind of a little bit lengthier in terms of description than the teacher one. But again, you've got ineffective, developing, effective, highly effective. And as you move from one level to the next, it's really the same sort of idea, right? Sort of nothing ever happens, sometimes happens, most often happens, and then kind of happens always. And the same idea, Jody and I go through training where we're able to calibrate and use the rubric. So the one difference between APPR, I guess, and the teacher one, the teacher, while, yes, teachers are setting goals, more of the focus is on classroom pedagogy and on just the teaching and learning process. Whereas with the principals, they are more formally involved in setting both personal goals, building goals, and the district goals, which ties back into our strategic plan. They are then part of the action steps to execute that plan. And then at the end, we evaluate where we are in terms of what was our goal? How do we plan to achieve those goals? Where are we in relation to those goals? From time to time, we do have folks that struggle. And again, I said, the whole purpose of this is to be a collaborative process that fosters continuous improvement. And sometimes we have to formally put this improvement in writing to make it crystal clear for folks that are struggling. So we do have improvement plans when that happens. So when either a teacher or administrator is identified to be in need of improvement, we establish a formal plan that has a timeline to achieve improvement. How the improvement's going to be assessed, what activities we're going to provide to allow them to improve. And then again, we continue to focus on professional growth throughout the process. There are typically monthly meetings where we sit down with the teacher or administrator to review the prior month's progress, ask what other supports they need. It's, again, it's a very, very collaborative process. And we, unfortunately, we have to do this from time to time. But I would say our success rate with improvement plans is, it's really, really high. I would say, in the last ten years or so, we've had, oh, maybe ten teachers on a teacher improvement plan. I think only one of them hasn't worked out. So as long, the biggest key is, again, because it's a collaborative process, the person on the plan recognizing that it's not a punishment, it's a collaborative process to improve. And when they have that mindset, then typically, things go very, very well. It's when they're resistant to the improvement plan, or they feel that they don't need to be on one, or that they're already doing a great job, that's typically when things don't work out so well. And that is all I have. Questions?
Any questions? So you, you mentioned that there are different rubrics and different plans, or maybe you mentioned there are different rubrics and different ways of providing feedback out there. And I'm just wondering, like, how, first, am I understanding correctly? And if so, how did Bethlehem land on using this, these specific rubrics? I guess is my first.
Yes, so, I mean, both were part of collective bargaining. But I would say, like, the Danielson rubric was available, like I said, well before the state mandated it. So we were actually using it here before that.
So that one state, that one state mandated, for the teachers there?
So they're both state mandated. So when APPR first became a law, because the state didn't feel that the schools were doing an adequate job of evaluating teachers and excising ones that they, that state deemed didn't deserve to have employment, which, I don't know if you saw the more recent articles, that basically, they're unable to find evidence any teacher being fired because of this process. So I'm not sure what they thought it was going to be, but it didn't turn out to be that. So the rubric's in place well before then. I mean, we're, we're in a game of making sure that students walk away with the best educational experience possible, right? So you have to have an evaluation system in place for that to work. So this was just more of a formal thing we had to do for the state. But these types of things were all in place well before that, right? Our teachers are being evaluated on this rubric, principals were being evaluated, yeah.
Were only, basically, we were given a choice of X number of rubrics, and you had to select one of those for both teachers and administrators.
Yeah, I think the state has three approved teacher rubrics, and maybe two approved principal rubrics. But luckily, I mean, we were already, so the principal one, like I said, is based on the national standards, which we were already using anyways. And the teacher rubric, we always have been using Danielson, so, since it came out.
Got it. And so are the, so is this a situation where the state sets minimum standards, and districts can adopt other standards in addition? Or is this a state, or is this a situation where the state mandates these are the limited number of choices you have?
So in terms of the rubric, you can only choose from their menu?
Yeah.
In terms of how you do, like, they have a requirement, a minimum requirement in terms of the number of evaluations, because of, like, the rule where you have to have a lead evaluator and an independent evaluator, so at minimum, you have to have two. Once you get to there, though, then that's where the flexibility comes in. So we decided, obviously, that our non-tenured teachers need to be evaluated formally far more frequently than our tenured, which is why you can see the big discrepancy, right? Four formals versus one formal, one walkthrough.
Yeah. And then you mentioned the collective bargaining. So all of this, I'm guessing, is collectively bargained with the union?
Yeah, so we have, it's called the Professional Practices Committee, that has representation from all of our buildings. And that's the body that basically makes decisions around APPR. When we make changes to report cards, trying to think what else we've used it for. We'll probably use some subset of that committee when we talk about special areas at the elementary level and scheduling. Like, so anything that sort of impacts teaching and learning, that's the committee that typically works through that.
Got it. And that's made up of teachers, supervisors, and administrators. So it's done, the APPR, what's collectively bargaining is basically done as a joint process.
Right.
Got it. So working to kind of hash out the details and then taking it to the table?
Right, which is why, if you look at the contract, it won't specify, this plan won't be in the contract. It'll say APPR plan as approved by the Professional Practices Committee. And then it's a separate plan, yeah.
Cool, thank you. I have a couple more questions, but I don't want to.
Any questions?
For the supervisory evaluation, is there any peer feedback given, or any feedback from staff?
Yeah, that's a good point. So when we have newly hired administrators, we typically bring, depending on, we've done it a couple different ways. One way we've done it was we've brought back the interview team, and we've asked them to gather feedback from their different stakeholder groups. And then we meet with them, Jody and I will. And then after we meet with them, we will then bring in the new administrator, and we'll provide them with that feedback. Other times, we've brought in, like, the entire department. So if you're the ELA supervisor, we might bring in the entire ELA department and gather feedback. We've done it both ways. But yes, we, in years, typically Years One and Two will do that. Sometimes you have to do it again in Year Three, but usually Years One and Two is sufficient.
What about Year Seven?
Yeah, so by then, they have tenure, right?
Yeah.
So we're still getting feedback, but it's not, again, it's not a formal process where we need lots of evidence to make sure that we're comfortable recommending somebody for tenure to you all.
One thing, just to that point, though, even though Dave talked about the improvement process as part of, like, the APPR, one of the things that we typically utilize is there could be someone in Year Ten who's struggling for whatever reason, and we have the ability to use the improvement process on any person at any point in their career. And we have utilized that to help people who are struggling. So it's not just in the years they're probationary, it can be done at any point. And, you know, we view, we've always had, as Dave said, a collaborative working relationship with the unions on that. And it's in their interest, obviously, to help support someone who is struggling. So in the APPR process, you have to have that formal improvement plan in place. But we utilize that outside of just that APPR process in the probationary period.
And is that negotiated with the union if, or is it?
Which part of it?
Well, it's part of the APPR, but, I mean, in regards to outside of that, it's usually a conversation and feedback about someone is struggling. We think, maybe it's a conversation, or maybe we've had a conversation and things still aren't going well. We need to then, you know, let's put this in place as the next step, yeah.
Well, there's one spin-off from that. So in terms of the goals, I know you've got the district goals, but for those supervisors going forward, do they have, like, individual goals?
They do.
And are set that measure currently?
So when, both for principals and supervisors. So when we held our year, meetings at the beginning of the school year, that's what our discussion is about, the goals for the year. And then when we meet with them mid-year and end of year, we're formally checking in on those goals, but we're still sort of, again, informally checking in throughout the year. And then they're, obviously, they're also part of whatever building goals they might have established if they're, say, a principal, or everyone's invested in the district goals that Jody will be presenting next week, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then what happens when things don't go well? What happens, you have a tenured teacher, and they've got an improvement plan, and for whatever reason, they're not improving?
So, I mean, we obviously keep working with them. We have had situations where we've gotten to the point where we've had to go through the termination process, which, as you know, is a very long and expensive process. So we obviously try not to get to that point. But, I mean, most, I've found in this business, right, most people want to do what's right by kids, right? So as long as you keep that focus, typically, you're able to work through whatever issues there might be. Yeah.
And then you mentioned that the rubric will wind up with a score at the end, and so much is based on that score. Is that also, you know, part of a conversation with the union? Or how does that, how does that play out? Like, I've got a.
So that's all dictated by the state, the way the scores work, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
So I'm here, and so on the observation rating, there's the H, the E, the D, and the I. So H is a four, effective is a three, developing is a two, ineffective is one. On each of those, so you'll get it, oh, I went too far. So you'll get a score from one to four on each of these items.
Okay.
So then within each domain, you'll have an average, right? And then you'll have an overall average. So let's say your overall average is a three point six. Well, anything between three point five and a four point O is an H. Anything from a three to a three point four nine is an E, and so forth. So it's all just based on an average system, based on your score from each of the different.
And then the score on this performance gets added to that, and then you get an overall rating?
Right.
And then do community members, or parents, or other folks have access to those ratings? Is there a RateMyTeacher.com or something, like, I release, I just mean, I'm just kidding.
They just, they have access to a teacher's overall rating.
Right, but not their individual.
But not individual, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Next is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have anyone who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come forward. Item Six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent with the Board of Education through the following finance action items, one through three. Samu.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through twenty-three. Samu.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? And we do have Doug Morrissey with us this evening, who is our new Director of Special Education. Doug, I don't know if you want to come up and say a quick hello to everybody?
Good evening. It's nice to meet everyone. I look forward to a chance to get to know you all in the years to come. And just wanted to take a moment to thank Ms. Monroe, Dr. Hurst, the entire selection team on their support, and all of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through twenty-six. Samu.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question.
Yep.
What, when, when we're looking at the bidding document, maybe I'm directing this question at you, John, or Jody. What, just to, could you just put that in context for me for the, for the presentation? Yeah.
So in August, transportation drivers in attendance, based on the basis of seniority, get to choose their routes. And there's some strategy that goes into play in terms of what meets the needs of that particular employee, in terms of hours worked, or desired hours worked. And it's sort of a rolling bidding process over the course of the afternoon.
Got it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action item number one. Samu?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item Seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If you have any visitors who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Item Eight, future meetings and events. Tomorrow, as mentioned, is the first day of school for all of our K-12 students. So good luck to all of them, and to all of our teachers and staff in all the buildings. Next Wednesday, September eleventh, at 5:30, we are having a board retreat here at the high school. Please make sure you have checked your email for, among other things, a food survey from Brittany. And Wednesday, September eighteenth, is our next regularly scheduled board meeting, anticipating executive session at six, and reconvening to open session at seven. And then the, and that one is here at the high school. And then the, and that one is here at the high school. And then our meeting after that on Wednesday, October 9th, is at Slingerlands Elementary School, and anticipating executive session at 6:00, and reconvening to open session at 7:00. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.